District-wide school safety plan? Peggy?
Resolved that the Board of Education.
Sorry, thank you. Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby open the public hearing on the 2021-2022 district-wide school safety plan at this time.
Eleven point two presentation of the district-wide school safety plan. Peggy?
The district-wide school safety plan must be made available for public comment at least thirty days prior to adoption by the school board. The school board may adopt the plan only after at least one public hearing that has been held, which provides for the participation of school personnel, parents, students, and other interested parties. Amendments to Education Law 2801A require that district-wide safety plans to be made available for public comment. However, to comply with the confidentiality provisions of this section, public comment is no longer required for the summary of the building-level emergency response plan. An email has been created for the submission of public comments on the district-wide school safety plan as follows.
Discussion?
One question, John. You need to, we need to have a motion, hold on.
We're not voting anything right now, just to have a discussion. I think, you, you. You got, you got the floor, Sarah.
Hi, good evening, thank you so much. I'm gonna, this is an annual, annual cycle, and I tried to think of a different way to do it this year, so, and thank you, Trustee Kellen, you actually, the information you just shared covered a couple of my slides. So this will be very brief, and so I figured, you know, the, the district-wide safety plan itself is rather lengthy, and the idea of summarizing it in a presentation doesn't make much sense, so I figured I would just start off with the why we must do this, this will be very brief, and of course, and the plan is available to review online. But the district-wide safety plan is, is required by Education Law 1801, as was read in the resolution, as well as Commissioners Regulation 155.17, and requires all schools and districts to create these plans, as well as a number of different school safety teams. And the purpose of the plan primarily is just to simply, you know, document protocols and procedures that will help hopefully minimize or mitigate the effects of a violent incident or an emergency related to schools, and to coordinate with county and local resources in the event of such incidents or emergencies. As already stated, while just adding to it already, or what was previously stated was that the district's safeties team must review annually our plan and make recommendations for changes. Prior to the adoption of the plan, the district must hold at least one public hearing, which is, this evening is the start of that, and that, and that there is a thirty-day period where we'll have input from the public on our plan. The plan must be posted on our website, which it is, it's on our homepage, and there'll be a link to it at the end of this presentation. And in October, a URL must be, the URL for where the plan lives on our website must be sent to the New York State Education Department, and they, they give us a submission form for that. The plan itself must cover a number of different things, I won't read them all, but basically procedures and protocols for direct, implied, or actual threats and acts of violence, appropriate and mitigation and intervention strategies, strategies for improving communication amongst students and staff, protocols for responding to emergencies such as bomb threats. However, the district-wide plan itself is intentionally vague. The building-level plans, which Trustee Kellen had indicated, they are more specific, but those are confidential, they're not, they're not shared with the public, those are meant to be internal documents for other buildings and their building safety teams. The designation of a chief emergency officer, protocols for responding to a declared state of emergency disaster, that's new, and was amended in our, our previous school year's plan in March, and that was added to that. And, you know, I could, I could confidently say that all of these bullets are, are covered and addressed in the district-wide safety plan that is now posted on our website. Once again, the district-wide safety plan is different than the burden, building emergency response plan in that this is a public-facing document, it is more vaguely written, and actual building-specific protocols are identified in the building-level plans themselves. So anyone can access the plan and review it, and that is all I had for the opening of the public comment period on district-wide safety plans.
Does anyone on the board have any questions? Eddie?
Mr. Lakima, if you could just, just a quick overview, now that four of our buildings will be housing universal pre-K, just what steps or what things need to be done in order to ensure the buildings are safe for those particular students, i.e. fire drills, and so I guess some training for the teachers and TAs that are gonna, gonna be teaching, just some logistics, and whether there's any significant changes we have to make, or is it just, there's just some specific training now that we have these additional students?
Sure, it's a good question. The training itself should apply to all staff in the building, so that training will be universal for all teachers, all staff. The protocols will also be the same for students, so what the, knowing that universal pre-K might run on a shorter schedule than a full-day schedule that our students have, the building administrators just need to be aware that during their planning of drills as cycles throughout the year, that they're including times when our universal pre-K students will be there to participate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jim? Mr. Lakima?
I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Darren.
I felt bad, I was gonna help Kristen then.
I think part, part of your presentation mentioned the chief safety officer?
Yes.
And do we have that designated yet?
Yeah, it's, it's usually me every year.
Okay, and the chief safety officer has to make sure, from what I understand, has to make sure that the safety plan, once approved, is uploaded to the portal?
Yes.
Because that's important for responding agencies, law enforcement, fire, safety, EMS, to have access to that plan through the portal.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lakima. Eleven point oh three, community input on the district's school safety plan. Is any community member with some comments?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm just trying to find out, this district-wide plan, is that something, is it, this is a new thing? No, okay, so what's changed from the one that was here, presently in place?
Go ahead.
Every year, the plan is, is reviewed and, and changed, and in this particular case, you did change the template of the plan, not using, you know, but the information in it is generally the same. So it looks different than the previous used plan, but every year, we are required to review it, make any updates to it, and put it on our website for review. Thank you.
I would recommend that the community read the district plan, and of course, submit any questions you may have to Mr. Lakima. All comments we appreciate. Eleven point oh four, motion to close a public hearing?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby close the public hearing and resume the regular board meeting.
Mary Johnson, second, a little favor. Unanimous. Twelve point oh one, public comments on agenda items. Total thirty minutes, three minutes per speaker. A total of thirty minutes at the beginning of each board meeting set aside to allow for public comment on agenda items only. Please address only agenda items. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited only to three minutes. All the items on the agenda, persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and a specific agenda item about which they are to speak. Individual comments and agenda items limit three minutes and are welcomed. If you wish to address items related to a school district that are not on tonight's agenda, a public comment period is provided at the end of the meeting for that purpose. In due respect for different points of view, clapping, booing, any disturbance or disruption during either public comment period is not permitted. At this time, comments related to agenda items are welcome. Please state your name and the agenda items you're, you're speaking on. Based on policy and meeting law policy, vote number twelve thirty, debate or dialogue with or responses from board members or staff are not allowed during the meeting. Compliments or complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personal must not be addressed during public comment. Comments or questions submitted for the use of the, of the public comment forum will be sent to the appropriate staff member who will provide a response on the district public comment response webpage. At this point, are there, is anyone who wants to address any agenda item? Please come forward. Can't see none. Twelve point oh two, board goals, subcommittee report and discussion, approval of board goals. Peggy, you're at the floor. Just read, just read.
Yes. We had a, we had a subcommittee meeting, we had two committee meetings. Board members submitted suggested goals, we discussed them, we tried to consider, since this is an unusual year, we've just come through the pandemic and shutdown, and we felt that the goals should really reflect the particular challenges of this year. So we came up with three goals, dealing basically with the academic situation, with the social and emotional environment, and with the financial aspect of the shutdown and recovery. So goal for twenty-one, twenty-two, what we proposed, the subcommittee is proposing, is goal one, support students in accelerating their learning and addressing academic recovery due to pandemic-related educational interruptions. Address learning gaps to minimize disruption in a student's educational journey. Goal two, develop the students' fundamental social and emotional skills which impact learning and success in life. Provide emotional support for staff and students. Goal three, utilize federal and state short-term funding to address district needs now and for the future. Okay, wait, yeah, resolve that the Board of Education of the Wapanger Central School District hereby adopts the Board of Education goals for the 2021-22 school year as stated.
Motion, Peggy, second, Peggy? A discussion? Eddie?
I just had a question for everyone. I know for number three, for utilize federal and state short-term funding to address district needs now, which is obvious, and, and for the future, the, the thing is, not knowing how long we're gonna get federal aid with regards to COVID, I'm just trying to think, you know, if it's short-term funding, how would we be able to utilize it for the future? If we're gonna have to use that money now? And the other thing I'm thinking is that if they're giving us money now, we're gonna have to use the money now, I don't think they would allow us not to use it and hold it for the future. Because again, we also don't have guidance on this money, really, as of yet, because that hasn't been approved either.
Okay, just a clarification, that was referring to some discussions that, and suggestions related to capital improvements that apparently are allowable under the federal and state, state funding, certainly to, in the realm of ventilation and cooling, which might be a big advantage. So that is, that's what we were thinking about, long-term, so we can be thinking of laying the groundwork with this short-term, one-time money for things that we really would like on a long term, rather than blowing it all on, you know, one-time things that we would have in the future.
Also, in regards to that, when we had these discussions, one of the fundings, Ms. Crandall can verify for me, I believe we have until 2024 is one of them.
It depends on whether or not it's going to be extended, it's guaranteed.
Right, it's guaranteed through 2024, so therefore, it's not just this year. We do have a couple of years in which we're, it's being spread out, so therefore, that is the future right there. So it's not all just this school year, that funding, so that's where that comes in.
A pro, a project we could start now, but we might not real, uh, realize, right, sorry, for air conditioning and ventilation, when we have to involve.
And other, and other projects that might.
And we have to get approval from state ed, which we know can take forever. Okay, makes sense now, thank you for the explanation.
Just a little clarification, there were three relief acts passed. The first one has to be finished up, the spending has to be finished in 2022, the second in 2023, and the third in 2024. So we have to consider the different sources of the money, but we have different time limits, so it can be spread out.
Ron and I will be very happy for any monies for capital improvements, so that's good.
Thank to Keith, Marie, and Peggy to volunteer in this, at our committee, and coming up with these three very good goals. Any other questions? John?
If I, if I could, Mr. Rumia, I think, and, and want to commend, I, I think the inclusion of for the future is very important, not only for, for capital improvements, but ways that, that the district can potentially invest that money that will, you know, lead to efficiencies and, and things like that, that will both benefit the school district and, and our, our taxpayers in the, in the future.
Any other comments? See none, Jim?
I just wanted to concur with you, President Rumia, and thank Trustee Odoms, Kellen, and Johnson for their work and this effort, working along with the senior staff to, to hone the goals into something that, you know, we can be proud of, thank you.
I also like to thank Dr. Bump for being part of that group. Keith? You have a question, Keith? You're probably gonna say the same thing I did, correct? All right, I hold those in favor. Unanimous. Thirteen oh one, does anybody want to remove anything from the agenda? Marie?
Yes, I want to remove thirteen oh seven, item number two.
Anyone else? Peggy?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. Thirteen point zero two with addendums, thirteen point zero three with addendums, thirteen point zero four, thirteen point zero five, thirteen point zero six, thirteen point zero seven, except not item number two, thirteen point zero eight, thirteen point zero nine, thirteen point one zero, thirteen point one one, and thirteen point one two.
Motion, Marie, second. Jim, hold a favor. Thirteen four oh seven, item two.
Okay. Thirteen point zero seven, approval of consultant agreements, item two, Teaching Empathy Institute, addressing the social, emotional, leading, learning needs of staff and students at a cost of ninety thousand three hundred and four dollars for a term from July seventh, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, with a federal funding source.
A discussion, Marie?
Wait, a motion?
Marie, second. My mic, hold a favor.
No, now it's discussion, now it's discussion. I'm just letting you know, I'm going to be recusing myself, I don't feel I have a good enough grasp of this program. I went into their site today, I tried to learn it, I didn't get a chance to get to this till late this afternoon. I, I was confused by the site and some of the stuff on it, so I'm recusing myself from this, because I don't feel comfortable with the information that I had yet.
Does anybody want to provide that information?
Right, good evening. So I do have an entire packet of the work that the Teaching Empathy Institute will do. They are presenting their work in three different phases, so I can provide you with phase one, phase two, and phase three of the work. They will be starting, if approved, over the summer, working with our administrators and providing them with background information on how to have learning environments that address the students' social and emotional needs. They will then meet with each of the principals, provide, prevent principals an opportunity to discuss what they feel their needs are, their principals could bring in some of their support staff to have the conversations, and then the, David Levine will then create a plan for each specific building based upon the needs that they stated. The goal is to have the teachers address students' social, emotional learning through the curriculum, so during morning meeting time, what are the activities that you are doing in your classroom to address the students? How can you have conversations with students at the junior high school and high school levels in order to ascertain what their needs are? We will have surveys that's provided to the students, this way, we're able to get additional information on how we can better support students and their families. So it's really about providing that background knowledge that's needed for our administrators and our teachers, and how to create social, emotional learning environments, so not something that's isolated through a particular program, but something that's integrated within the curriculum and, and every day. What are some of those activities? What are some of those assemblies? What are some of those things we do already, but we don't necessarily have a name to? So we are identifying them as being social, emotional, learning activities, and then how can we use that to better prepare our students to adjust to this post-pandemic school year?
Dr. Cardwell, I, I would like to thank you for giving an overview of that. We had said that it was one of our goals to make sure that we address social and emotional needs of our students upon their return from the pandemic. Obviously, we will be returning in-person instruction the first day of school, there may be some individuals that haven't been in in-person instruction for fifteen months. Needless to say, COVID has impacted our students and staff differently, and this is another vehicle that we can use to make sure that we identify those students that are having potential social and/or emotional issues, so that we know exactly what to look for, and we know how to work with them, so that they can begin to have some assistance, whether it be with a school counselor in regards to that, so that they can begin to focus on actual learning. We anticipate that that's probably gonna be the first couple of months of the school year, we'll be doing a lot of that. We want to make sure that the staff is adequately trained to ensure that nobody falls through the cracks in regards to this. So I wholeheartedly support this program, and thank you for your work on it.
You're welcome. One of the things we thought was very helpful and positive about the Teaching Empathy Institute is that they are going to work with each of our buildings to develop a plan that's right for them. We know our fifteen schools are different, they have different needs, different populations, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't have one plan to fit all fifteen schools. We could potentially have fifteen plans that's going to address the specific needs and cultures of that particular building. So what Vassar Elementary is going to get is gonna be different than RCK High School, depending upon what the principal and their support team say they need.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cardwell, for that explanation. Are there any comments? Yes, Eddie?
I would, it's safe to say, Dr. Cardwell, that the school psychologists and counselors will also be included in whatever training or development, as well as, hopefully, we'll be able to secure the six positions that the board approved in the budget for bringing on additional, you know, support staff in that area. I know, it's gonna be maybe part of either professional development, or I know you said for each building, but aside from the principals, I don't know if that's the plan, but even though they are the professionals, but we are bringing in, you know, a group to offer some additional ideas and recommendations, might just be a good idea to include them, not only just the principals and the other administrators, but the actual school counselors and, and psychologists, and kind of, you know, as you said, formulate a plan for each particular building. Because we do have a psychologist, psychologist that work in more than one building, so obviously, those buildings may have, as you said, different plans.
Right, of course, we're starting off this summer by training the administrators, they're then going to build, bring in their building-level teams closer to the end of August, beginning of September, in which they are developing the plan for each particular building. So yes, our support staff will be included in the conversations, as well as our teachers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion approved, and all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, that's one extension. Carrie, one extension, Carrie. Fourteen oh one, approval of bond resolution. Two million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars purchase of student transportation vehicles. Keith? Can you imagine? President, you, you have to read all the documents.
Yes, a resolution authorizing the issuance of two thousand, two, two million, two million, two six hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four bonds of Wapanger Central School District, Duchess and Putnam Counties, New York, to pay the cost of the purchase of student transportation vehicles in and for said school district. Whereas, all conditions precedent to the financing of the capital project hereinafter described, including compliance with the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, as a type-two action, have been performed. And whereas, at the annual meeting of the qualified voters of Wapanger Central School District, Duchess and Putnam Counties, New York, the school district, held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, a proposition was duly adopted authorizing the Board of Education of said school district to undertake the purchase of student transportation vehicles, including incidental expenses in connection therewith, and a maximum estimated cost of two million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars. Such proposition providing for the levy of a tax, therefore, to be collected in installments, with up to two million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, one extra sixty-four dollars obligations of said school district to be issued in anticipation thereof. And whereas, it is now desired to provide for the authorization of such class of objects or purposes and for the financing thereof, now therefore be it resolved by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the Board of Education of Wapanger Central School District, Duchess and Putnam Counties, New York, as follows. Section one, the purchase of student transportation vehicles, including incidental expenses in connection therewith, at a maximum estimated cost of two million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars, in and for the Wapanger Central School District, Duchess and Putnam Counties, New York, is hereby authorized. Section two, the plan for the financing of the aforementioned two million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars maximum estimated cost shall be by the issuance of two million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars bonds of said school district hereby authorized to be issued, therefore, pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law. Section three, it is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned class of objects or purposes is five years pursuant to subdivision twenty-nine of paragraph A of section one-one point zero zero of the local finance law. Section four, the faith and credit of said Wapanger Central School District, Duchess and Putnam Counties, New York, are hereby irrevocably pledged for the payment of the principal of an interest on such bonds as the same respectively become due and payable. An annual appropriation shall be made in each year sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on such bonds becoming due and payable in such year. There shall annually be levied on all the taxable real property in said school district a tax sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on such bonds as the same become due and payable. Section five, subject to the provisions of the local finance law, the power to authorize the issuance of and to sell bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance and sale of the bonds hereinauthorized, including renewals of such notes, is hereby delegated to the president of the Board of Education, the chief fiscal officer. Such notes shall be of such terms, form, and contents, and shall. Such notes shall be of such terms, form, and contents, and shall be sold in such manner as may be prescribed by said President of the Board of Education, consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Section 6, all other matters except as provided herein relating to the bonds herein authorized, including the date, denominations, maturities, and interest payment dates within the limitations prescribed herein and the manner of execution of the same, including the consolidation with other issues, and also the ability to issue bonds with substantially level or declining annual debt service, shall be determined by the President of the Board of Education, the Chief Fiscal Officer of such school district. Such bonds shall contain substantially the recital of validity clause provided for in section 52.00 of the local finance law, and shall otherwise be in such form and contain such recitals in addition to those required by section 51.00 of the local finance law, as the President of the Board of Education shall determine, consistent with the provisions of the local finance law. Section 7, the validity of such bonds and bond anticipation notes may be contested only if, 1, such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose for which said school district is not authorized to expend money, or, 2, the provisions of law which should be complied with as of the date of publication of this resolution are not substantially complied with, and an action suit or proceeding contesting such validity is commenced within 20 days after the date of such publication, or, 3, such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution. Section 8, this resolution shall constitute a statement of official intent for purposes of Treasury Regulation Section 1.1502. Other than as specified in this resolution, no monies are or are reasonably expected to be reserved, allocated on a long-term basis, or otherwise set aside with respect to the permanent funding of the object or purpose described herein. Section 9, this resolution, with takes effect immediately, shall be published in summary form in the official newspaper of said school district for such purpose, together with the notice of the school district clerk substantially in the form provided in section 8.1.00 of the local finance law.
Take a drink, Peggy.
A discussion? John? The, um, the amount of the, of the bonds, since bonds are normally issued in denominations of a minimum of, of a thousand dollars. No? Different? Um, where are we getting the $164 from?
Okay, so the Board of Education approved the, the proposition for the bus prop. We use a bond anticipation note, which is a five-year revolving method of financing in order to pay for these school buses. They do not have to be in, um, denominations per thousand. So this bond anticipation note is exactly the amount of the proposition that was approved by the board and also subsequently approved by the voters. This is to put forth the actual funding mechanism that will occur around August 13th. Um, school districts do not have that requirement for the denominations to be in full thousands. We do it for exactly what we need.
Thank you. Mike?
Do we know if there's any electric school buses being purchased through this bond?
Yes.
And does our infrastructure have the capability of supporting it?
Okay, so none of the vehicles being purchased in this proposition are, um, anything but gasoline or diesel-powered. With, the district did look into propane and electric. However, the cost of those vehicles are significantly higher than the vehicles that we are purchasing off New York State contract during this proposition. We do not have any infrastructure currently to support electro, electric vehicles. But at this point in time, replacing our fleet is, is what we're looking to do. And, um, we cannot replace it fast enough. We're still catching up from years where we were not able to do this to be able to support the purchase of anything beyond, uh, the gas or diesel-powered vehicles at this time.
Does the state mandate that eventually we'll have to purchase electric vehicles?
We have not heard anything about that yet, sir, but we are very active in the New York, it's called MIAP. Actually, Mr. Broas is going next, this weekend, correct? This weekend, up to the conference. And he will be actually looking at vendors. At, we've had conversations for both the propane and the electric vehicles and making connections. But at this point in time, um, this proposition does not include any of those types of vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See none? All in those in favor? Unanimous? Approve, uh, 1402, approval of 10 New York State School Board Association Summer Law Conference.
Resolved that the, yeah, resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve that board member, uh, attend.
Before we approve that, Alberta, I believe we're entitled to two people to go, I believe?
Yes, you usually pick two, in the past.
All right, before we give names, uh, anybody interested? Peggy, besides Peggy, anybody else interested? Uh, the dates are July 20th, that's for the Albany, and there's one, uh, July 22nd and 23rd.
Yes.
Anybody else? I think it'd be somebody from, uh, perhaps the Legislative Assembly Committee? Would that be appropriate for this particular conference of Alberta?
Sure. Any other?
Uh, 22nd, at the, uh, 22nd and 23rd.
The 22nd and 23rd one is virtual, so you would do it at home. And the other one is, uh, the 20th is in-person up in Albany.
All right, see, no one else? Like Peggy, read that, please.
Summer Law, 2021 Summer Law Conference. The NISBA Summer Law Conference will present the key legal issues and critical information needed to open schools safely. What real life and potential legal issues are involved with bringing students back to school? What are the lingering questions regarding educator evaluations and tenure granting decisions? How will the latest court decisions and legislative and regulatory changes affect district legal responsibilities? What are the most recent developments and emerging trends in special education? How will collective bargaining between school districts and their unions change? How will you address the social and emotional needs of students returning to school? And the two, uh, the information about the dates and location, we, I already mentioned.
So once again, is anyone else besides Peggy to attend that particular meeting? Okay, see none? Peggy, read that, put your name on it, please.
Okay. Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve that board member Peggy Kellent attend the NISBA Summer Law Conference on July, and I would choose the virtual one because it's cheaper and there's no reason why the district should have to pay more since I'm happy doing it at home, on July 22nd and 23rd, 2021, with a registration fee of $200, member rate.
Can I, I think you were supposed to check as to whether all of us actually attended. Were you able to get that information?
Yes, I did. Um, they said that $200 was per registrant.
Per registrant, that would be each person.
All right. All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Oh, let me get the motion in a second. First, we have a motion.
Motion, Mary Johnson, second. Jim Spencer. All those in favor? Unanimous? Approval to attend Mid Hudson Schools, uh, School Board Association Law Conference?
Okay. Uh, resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve all interested board members to attend the virtual Mid Hudson School Study Council Annual School Law Conference on Friday, August 6th, 2021, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, at a cost of $175 registration fee. Uh, Zoom single-length fee, unlimited viewers at district site.
Motion? Jim, second. Marie? All those in favor? Unanimous? 1404, approval to attend 2021 Board Officers Academy.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the Board of Education President and Vice President to attend the 2021 Board Officers Academy at the cost of the 2021 registration fee. $300 was the member rate for 2019, and any reimbursement for mileage, travel, tolls, parking, and meals per board policy. 2021 Board Officers Academy, Latham, date September 10th, 2021, time 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Please note that NISBA has not posted the 2021 registration fee. At this one-day academy, you will learn how to assess the qualities and skills of great leaders, develop a cohesive board team, run an efficient board meeting, interact with the media to communicate your message clearly, and conduct an effective public comment session. Through hands-on experience, mock sessions, and role-playing, you will develop your leadership style, communication skills, and facilitation techniques as you learn a variety of best practices for effective leaders.
Motion? Peggy, second. Keith, discussion? Marie?
I know that you and Keith attended this two years ago, and I think you've attended this before, correct? For the president, vice president one, I thought, no, I'm just, I'm just asking if you guys had attended it already, that's $300.
Uh, it's different each time. It's, it's, you know, like an annual conference and it's, uh, you know, they have totally different activities, speakers, and so forth.
Personally, I think if, well, if somebody wants to take my place, I'm more than happy to relinquish that position, if anybody wants to take it. Does anybody want to? And besides, it's my, it's my, it's my birthday. What? I know it says president, but.
Point of order, you'd have to change the resolution.
Well, I'll make a motion to change the resolution. Second? No second?
No, it should be for the president or vice president.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
Well. Okay, all right. I'll leave it the way it is then, okay? Motion? Peggy, second. Keith, all in favor? Unanimous? Uh, for, board members may request additional agenda items, discussion items, or requests for information. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda? I think you do.
Okay. I think these were, did we? We, we did it with the, uh, we did them, yeah, with the consent agenda.
Oh, we did?
Yes, same and addendums.
All right.
Yep.
Uh, 1601, public comments, comments from the public? Are there any comments from the public?
Yes, um, I'm, in relation to the, um, social and emotional problem of education that they're going to be getting, I'm curious what questions or, or how, how they were going to get that help? How, how is that, you know, how is the help going to get to the students? Do you follow my question? Perhaps?
Perhaps, what's the name of, Dr. Cowan can address that particular question individually? I make a suggestion that write your particular question to Dr. Cowan, she can respond to that, okay?
Okay. Um, and also, I was, I would also like to know, um, there was a, um, when I read in the news, there was a, a vote by the, by a large teachers' union to, um, I guess combat any fight against what's called critical race theory. And this teachers' union, so they voted to, um, fight back against people who are fighting against critical race theory. I would like to know if people on the board here would support what the union, how the union is going forward and trying to fight back against critical race theory? Who, who on the board here would agree with the union in fighting against critical race theory? Fighting against those who fight against critical race theory? Are you all for critical race theory? I guess, I guess you don't have to answer my question, um, but, um, be assured, when it comes time for you to be elected again, that will come up. Thank you.
I heard Dr. Cardwell refer to questionnaires, um, and people who are going to come in and tell us how to, how to tend to students' social and emotional concerns, but there was no mention of what the specific social and emotional concerns are. And I find it concerning that no one on the board who voted for it seemed to have any concerns or questions about what those, those issues would be and whether or not the community really wants the school district addressing such concerns as potentially a student who's, uh, maybe concerned about the vaccine, where a parent is concerned in the other direction. We want to be having these discussions, discussions about, uh, sexual orientation, uh, these types of things. These, these are, these are issues that are coming up within the code of conduct, within, uh, policy that we're implementing. And I'm not sure that we want to invite people outside of the district to come in and have our, our personnel addressing these concerns with our children without a much more intense and, and vibrant conversation about what type of issues we're talking about and who's addressing them and what's on the questionnaires that we're going to be giving to our students. Are we going to be soliciting concerns from students? Um, how and, and why? And this just seems like a tremendous undertaking that I think warrants a lot more consideration than it appears to me that the board gave it. Thank you.
You see no one else to make a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry? Keith, Keith wants to address the board?
Yes, I wanted to address all the trustees. I wanted to thank everybody for allowing me to, uh, represent the board as vice president over the past year. It's been great working with the retired superintendent, currently, uh, Dr. Bunk. It was great working with you, uh, of course, uh, the president and, and Mrs. Alberta for keeping us, uh, together and make sure we did everything properly. So I wanted to thank everybody again for, uh, allowing me to represent as vice president this past year. Thank you. And I know you have a great president, vice president this year.
Thank you.
Keith, you've been extremely valuable as a vice president. All right, thank you for your service and your dedication. Thank you for your service, I really do. Thank you again, trustee.
Thank you. Thank you.
And with that, make a motion to adjourn? Second. Marie? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, it's 902.